February 9, 2023.
I will call Health and Safety to order at 6:00 PM. Members present are Dan Wireball, Steve Young, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. First item, is there any public participation for the Health and Safety Committee this evening? Come one up to the podium and tell us who you are, Ray.
Right that off. Two-ten Ethel Street. Had a quick question for Law Director. A while back, you read off a list of houses that were on the list for demo or dilapidated houses. Is that public record? Is there a way I can get that list?
It's in my head.
Could we make a list and make it public?
Sure.
That's all I need. Thanks.
Yep. You had a house to add to the list?
Anybody else for public participation with Health and Safety? Seeing none? You have in your packet the minutes from the regular Health and Safety Committee meeting from January 19th, 2023. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Wireball, a second from Mr. Young. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. Opposed, the same. Motion carries. All right, next, we've been asked to make two appointments to the Property Maintenance Appeals Board, and is there any other information other than we've got the names presented to us? What's the term? Is that a two-year term?
Four.
Four-year term?
Yeah.
And this is midterm, though, or is this a new term?
January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2027. This was submitted last time.
Yep.
Of the wrong committee.
Right.
So when I looked up the legislation, I had to put it in Safety.
Okay. And can we do both of them with one piece of legislation?
And then go to the same commission?
Yes. I would then entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Jared Miller and Mr. William Stuckert to the Property Maintenance Appeals Board.
So moved. Second.
And we're gonna ask for this, we'll ask you to go back on that as an emergency to get that in place, so.
Yes, as an emergency, I nominate Jared Miller and Bill Stuckert for the Property Maintenance Appeals Board.
Yeah, I'll still second.
All right. So I have a motion from Mr. McKeever to appoint Jared Miller and William Stuckert to the Property Maintenance Appeals Board as emergency legislation with a second by Mr. Wireball. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Mr. Gurner, anything further yet on the taxicab, or is that still work in progress?
Work in progress.
All right.
I got the annexation.
All right. Any open projects that any of the three of you wish to bring up tonight, Mr. Young?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McKeever?
No.
Mr. Wireball?
No.
All right. Is there any further public participation for Health and Safety? Seeing none, we'll adjourn at 6:03 PM.
Public Lands Committee, February 9, 2023, sorry.
Calling Public Lands and Buildings to order at 6:04 PM. Members present are Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Brenton Potter, and Ciaran Sherrick, Chair. That's me. Do we have any public participation for Public Lands?
Right that off. Two-ten Ethel Street. I noticed the other day that the subject of the Pines Reservoir has come up again for discussion. I just wanna kind of plead with the committee to explore all your options before you go deciding to sell off that piece of property. There's just so many different options we could do with that property to make it, keep it public, from walking trails, hiking, wood observation decks in different parts of the pines. It's just a really nice piece of property, and not too many people get out there. I don't know if any of you have ever been out there to actually check it out. It's more than just a little mud hole. Everybody thinks it's a swamp. Well, it's not. There's some old growth oak trees back there, obviously some pine trees. It's just a nice place to be, and it wouldn't take much to make some trails, hiking trails, walking trails. And I know people that are willing to volunteer to place some trails through there. And I was also wondering if the Park District might be interested in that now, since the situation with the dam is taken care of. I know before they didn't have the money to fix the dam, and maybe they might consider working with that now that that problem's fixed. I don't know if anyone's ever been up to Maggie Marsh up at the lake, their boardwalk they got up there, something like that. Not to that extent, obviously, that's a big place up there, but they get hundreds of thousands of people up there in the springtime just watching birds. So just something to think about before you put it up on the market, I guess, up on the chopping block, or whatever you call it, auction block. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
No, I got something on Ray. So, and I'm not, I'm gonna pick on you, okay, Ray? So Ray, Ray wants, says he knows people that will come in and do this, so I guess I'm just kind of pleading to the community, get yourself a group together, you know, and start something, you know?
I'll be the first volunteer if we want to keep that and turn it into something.
Well, get some people, and you guys come back and say, we got plans for this, you know? And there's smart people out there that can explore this kind of stuff.
That help you lean more to keeping it instead of selling it off.
And I don't know what, I don't know, I just see us back on here, and I don't know, you know, I've always been against selling it, but personally, but, you know, I've changed my mind, too. I'm not, I'm not.
I've been waiting for it to come back up.
Yeah, so, and I thought of this, you know, when we first decided to drain it and all that, we just need an organization that, or a group that says, hey, let's do this, you know? And you can go out, you can get to, I don't know, I'm gonna pick on Kiwanis now. You can go out, Kiwanis is gonna do this this week, or Boy Scouts are gonna do this this week. But if, but there's gotta be someone that's like kind of the head of it, you know? The Pines Reservoir Restoration Group or something, you know?
We are, we'll be talking about this very shortly, so if we can go ahead and, you know, because it's like two items down the list. We're literally talking.
All right. Well, I just, Ray said he knew people, so he'll be on the phone tonight calling him, so.
I'll give everybody the phone number to you. Thanks.
Thanks, Ray.
Okay. So now we're looking at the approval of minutes from January 19th.
So moved.
Okay, so, motion from Mr. Myers?
Second.
And a second from Mr. Potter. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? All right, so those minutes have been passed. Now, we're on the sale of the Pines Reservoir that somebody wanted, brought up tonight.
I can speak to it. Thank you. Just, I've, we've had somebody that was interested in purchasing it, and that's why I wanted to refer it back into council, see what, I think there's three options on it. We sell it outright, you know, put a minimum bid on it. We obviously don't have the money to fix it up. I mean, it'd be great, but, you know, we can't even open the pool this year. We're not gonna be able to put any money into it. It's a lot more, it's 90 acres. It's so much more putting paths than you're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars. I'd love to do that. I think it's a great idea, but I think it'd be best to turn it over to somebody who may be able to do that. We reached out to ODNR to put, do something similar to it, maybe a campground. They're not interested in it. The County Park District's not interested in it. West Creek Conserva- Conservation, I can't remember the full title, the ones that came here the last time.
Conservatory.
Yeah, Conserva-, yeah, they're, they would, they've called a few times, and they called it again last week. I said, okay, would you like to come make another presentation? I would ask if you want to have them come and talk about it again. And then ODNR may be interested in purchasing it and turning it into wetlands. So we're still waiting on an answer there, too. So those are the three options that I know, or the fourth option certainly would be to just sit on it, and, you know, that's up to whatever you guys want to do. So I just, do you want to proceed with having West Creek come in and make another presentation?
It would be amazing to have them come in and not have us on a deadline of you either do it tonight or it doesn't happen kind of thing.
Okay. It was that was last.
Yeah, that was horrible. Nobody got their questions answered because the guy had no clue he was getting hit with that many questions.
Well, if I may, that didn't end in the ownership didn't stay with us.
Well, from what the guy said when he had answered my question, they would have ownership till it was done, and then when it was done, it could be transferred back to us as long as we could, we had a plan in place to maintain it. So that actually was the first, he said it was the first option. I don't know if it's still that way, because we, I don't know what they've changed since they talked to us last, but that was one of those things where while they're working on it, it's not us, but once they're done, it comes back. And I thought that that was kind of a nice option, but at the same time, he didn't even have all that information for us. We wouldn't, you know, that was as much as I got from my questions.
If I could invite him back in two weeks, would that be acceptable?
That would be actually.
And then we might have an answer from ODNR by then, and, you know, so.
And if we had a local group that wanted to get together with some ideas of what they could do, they could come back, since it sounds like this will be on here in two weeks?
There you go.
Just saying.
So, thank you.
Well, go ahead, Ray. Then I've got, I do have one thing to add, I'm not sure.
Yeah, there's a reason why people want this property, they want to make a buck off of it. And like I said, but there's volunteers all over Bussiris. I mean, look at our square. Who's paying for the flowers? Everything's volunteer. I mean, it's doable. So I'd rather you lean that way instead of doing like some people want to do and just sell it off. The money that the city gets from it is just gonna be pissed away anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I, well, you want to add that right now it needs, it needs $90,000 in repairs for the spillway, so it's, it's gonna come out of our budget. There's 90 acres there, there versus the square. You know, obviously, it's, there've been apples and oranges, but, but we, okay, right now we have $90,000, and if we do that, we're still responsible for the spillway now.
Has the Park District been approached since it's been drained? I know they weren't interested when it was a million dollars to fix the dam, but they have been asked after it's been drained. Well, anyway, consider it.
I think it's a great idea, but I just haven't the money for it.
Yeah, I would definitely bring people in.
I just haven't the money for it.
I would say everybody just needs to come back with information.
Instead of taking the easy route and just putting a for-sale sign in front of it, or, I mean, obviously, there's people interested, people know people, and they want to sell it to them, so I'd rather it stay public, that's all.
I understand that.
Lancaster, 130 Brentwood Street. Just a couple of questions quick. It's obvious from recent conversations we had, the city does not have the money to take on a project. Mr. Mayor, you already acknowledged that. You brought up the County Park District. They, you said they are not interested in. When was the last time they were contacted?
It's been about a year.
Okay. That's what I was gonna point out. This project hasn't been before you for recently that I've heard, so I figured everything's been on a tiny delay here. One thing, I guess I would ask after what little bit I've heard tonight, and I'd buy that the other day after Patrol and Assamanders, and the spillway is on. Does the spillway have to be replaced?
Yes. And we've been ordered to repair it.
By?
ODNR.
Okay. But ODNR does not want the land.
They might be interested in turning, and we talked to them today, they might be interested in turning it into wetlands, and they would pay us for the property, and I'm sure it's not gonna be a great amount of money. And, you know, it still could be up, I'm guessing it could be up in the public, but still.
I think those are some of the things that the city people are citizens, including the citizens of the county around here, because most of the guys around here know the Pines was well-known for its fishing out there, that whole reservoir was. So that area, the pines up there, is not a secret to anybody. I mean, I don't know how many times they chase people out there, one's supposed to be there late at night. But anyways, I think, no, not for, no, not for that reason. I know what's crossed their mind.
Not that reason.
People knew that area out there. It was solitude. And people went back there. I've found older people back there just watching the snow light over the lake, or the reservoir, so, but it was not really, quote, maybe a safe haven for older people. You know, you're out, you're by yourself, you're in the dark, and it's not exactly where you got emergency services, it's right there, more close. But, yeah, a year has been since the County Park District's been talked to about it, the ODNR. We have citizens here inquiring about it. As another citizen, I think it needs to be a step back, have the other people come in, see what they're gonna offer you, and talk about. But let's not, it's been a year, let's not rush into this. Let's take a look at all the options and see what's best. And I'm the first one to agree, the city doesn't have a lot of money put into that. You know, if you were sitting there and telling me you could put a dam in there for $10,000 right now, I'd tell you, you can't talk about spending money right now. But anyways, let's, let's take a step back on behalf of the citizens, look at all these avenues, and then give the citizens a chance to speak, and let's go with the best.
I'll reach back out to Josh Dyer.
I'll say, yeah, I have a meeting with him next week or the week after.
I thought you said he was already approached after.
A year ago, so we're gonna do it again.
After the drain? Yes. Maybe, you know, maybe things have changed there, too, so.
Mr. Wireball?
Yeah, when we first, before we, years ago, I guess, when we, the dam was bad, and we were all, you know, they said you got till the end of November or something to get this taken care of and all that. And I think we got it, we got it taken care of until, you know, the spring or something. And then I looked into a wetlands mitigation bank, and I don't believe you were here yet, so I don't know if that's something we could still look into. I don't know if that's what ODNR is looking at. Basically, what it is, if someone's building on wetlands, building, they get a, they get credits, and then this specific, they, there's so much of our wetlands that are, that are preserved because they've used them somewhere in the, it would have to be in the Sandusky River Basin. So I did a little research on it, talked to two different people, calculating, they just gave me a roundabout amount of what you could get out of it per acre. It was around $4 million at the time, if we sold them all, if there was a need for that. But they did also tell me that they really hadn't had a need for, that they knew of, for wetlands mitigation in the Sandusky River Basin. Now, has that changed? I don't know, that's been, what, four, whenever we drained it. Yeah, so I don't know if that's something we can revisit also, so it would be nice to be able to make some money off of. We, we would, I believe we retain the land, but we just, there's, this land is always set aside for these credits. So, and then the only other thing is if we're gonna talk about this in two weeks, I'd like to, from the administration, I'd like to see the report on this, on the repairing the, repairing the spillway, just for. Okay, that's all I got.
Mr. Wireball?
Yes.
If I could, a little bit, when you, since you're asking, were you aware that we have such a place in the county for this time, this mitigating?
I, I don't know if we do, do we?
There was, I've been on the surface for a few years, but over by press line, there is such a place that was purchased privately by a local resident in this county, and my understanding from what little bit I've heard, just finding out about it, is that person bought the land, and then when they built shopping centers, other business places, so on, in Columbus, Delaware, wherever, when they have to come up with a wetland, they can come to that private individual, and if they've got to make accomplishments for, let's say, 15 acres of land that they're gonna not let handle the water anymore, and they need 15 acres of wetland, they come to that person and basically purchase 15 acres of his land. Never quite understood this myself, but they purchased 15, 20 acre of his land, that land is then offset and is to never be built on and remains as wetland. So basically, it's, it becomes an investment property, as it was explained to me, and then somebody building a $10 million project in Columbus or Delaware, they don't have to worry about wetland down there, they just go out and seek out these places to buy it. Like I say, never quite understood that system at all myself, you know, we're building a shopping center, you know, two, three counties away, but the wetland is now over proper territory. But that's why, one of the reasons, actually, I'll be honest with you, in the background, that I was asking this to be really looked at closely and kind of let the citizens of the community have a lot of input in this, too, to where it goes.
Do we have anything else on this one? All right. Talking about leasing public lands to solar energy companies.
Yeah, who knows about that? Is that me? That's not me, is it? I just brought it up because somebody asked me.
See, I got, I got a letter from.
Okay. Well, the same guy.
Somebody indicating that they were looking in the area to lease some of the different farmlands out near the airport, I think on Beale Road. I don't know if there's any interest. Obviously, we have three-year leases already for crops, so we would have to buy out those leases, or they would probably buy out those leases. But I didn't know if council had any interest in responding or pursuing any of that, or just putting it to bed until those leases run up and look at it in three years, or what your ideas were.
Just from, I had a couple of conversations with them and was looking for some. In fact, there was some property here in town that I approached the property owner with, because I knew them, talking to them, but he, he wasn't interested in it because he had the property, the property was set up for something else, even though it's been vacant for years, and he was hoping for this anyhow. That's a whole nother story. But they, they, the prices are pretty substantial, a lot more than just farm rent.
Right.
And it's a 30-year, I think 30-year lease, and so.
So it might be good to get information about what all goes into it, and what all will, I mean, like some things, you can never use the land again for farming if it didn't work out, other things, you have so many years in between, because they're gonna put some bases or something in there, you know?
Yeah, so my understanding.
So probably get some information as to what all it would entail.
On these, they would put up a bond, so when they did or were to leave, there's money set aside for remediation. And so according to their contract, if they ever breached or left, the land would be restored to its original state, which sounds really good on paper.
Right.
Well, in 30 years, you know, I'll probably have to worry about it.
Right. But no, I mean, they're looking at like, you know, nine to 15 million dollars over 30 years. I mean, it's a thousand dollars an acre for.
Yeah.
Oh, for sure.
I think you just spoke just.
They're outrageous, outrageous amounts.
It's crazy.
They're paying like.
I'm looking to buy some farmlands. They don't have any. They'll give you 7,000.
So, yeah, if we could get some more information, I mean, because we have leases out there for three more years, what, you know?
Yeah, show us what the financial impact is gonna be long-term to the city. I think it'd be amazing.
And, well, and one of the other things, because I had a discussion a couple of years ago with, with another company, but they can also, it can also offset our, like the water treatment plant, we can, they can put some up that will.
Put some energy to offset that.
Offset that. Like, I have them on my house, and, you know, at one point I got a $7 bill, so, so basically all I can, at that, doing that, all you can do is offset what you use. So they were asking, they were asking me if I could get utility bills, but I haven't got around to that yet, so, to see, they said, maybe we could do something for that, so.
Well, if anybody has any clues to what this group is, if you want to bring them in and talk, that'd be great, too.
Yeah, yeah, I've got their contact info. I can.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to start looking ahead to the future.
I can say people, I don't know, so.
All right. Anything else there? Okay, do we have any other open projects we need to speak about? Any more public participations? Okay, then we will adjourn Public Lands at 6:25 PM. Plating Committee, February 9, 2023.
Okay, I will call Plating Committee to order at 6:26 PM. Members present, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Harry Spiegel, and myself, Chair. Any public participation for plating? No one at this moment, so on with the agenda. As you have before you the minutes for Thursday, January 19th. Can I entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve those minutes of January 19th, 2023.
Second. All right, I have a first from Dan, a second from Kevin. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. Any open projects? Any public participation? It's gonna be the shortest one tonight. All right, I will adjourn at 6:27 PM.
Economic Development Committee, February 9, 2023.
I would like to call Economic Development to order at 6:28 PM with members present, Ciaran Sherrick, Steve Young, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. We'll open the floor up for public participation, if there's any.
Hi, Dan Wireball, 1092 Martha Avenue. I sent earlier in the month, well, last month, I guess I sent the Chair and, and the Law Directors some ideas about annexation. I know we're gonna talk about this in a little bit, but I'm just, I'll be brief. And then today, I, it was later, I meant to do it sooner, I sent the rest of the council, I believe the mayor. So basically, all I'm asking is that any new, anyone who comes in for new service or changes their service at the utility department be made to follow the annexation policy, so that over time, maybe 10 years, 20 years, at least we're making some headway at getting there. So basically what it will, you guys all know what it says, but basically what it says is if you are adjoining the city, using our services, water and another service, or more than just water, I guess is the way it says, that you have to put in your deed that you will annex, or if you are already adjoining, you will annex. And then you can get the services from the city. So that's all I'm asking, just kind of wanted to clarify it, and now I guess you'll discuss that today.
Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to the approval of minutes from the January 19th, 2023 Economic Development Committee meeting. Could I get a motion to approve?
Summit.
Second. We have a first from Aaron and a second from Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is the design work for FY 2023 runway light upgrades from Crawford Murphy and Tilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today we have with us our engineer from Crawford Murphy and Tillis, Mr. Ben Cooley, and he's gonna explain that to you, so.
So it's not country music television?
Crawford Murphy and Tillis is the name. Ben Cooley, and so you gotta stop me if I'm not doing this right, but yes, we are the retained engineers for the airport, and it is, it is time to upgrade the lighting for the airport. The FAA has sort of been through the, the planning process with us to, you know, get the grant funds squared away for this year for the design portion of it, with the assumption that future funding will cover the construction piece in fiscal year '24. And so I don't know if you have any questions on that, but that is sort of what we're, we're working towards right now, would be working on the, getting that contract signed, and then get the design underway of the new airfield lighting at the airport. No changes to the airport, it is just replacing the outdated, I believe it's from the 1990s, lighting that is there, that is old and no longer functioning like it should.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Do you have a estimate on cost?
I do. Hang on one second, let me get that. Right now, the, the design piece is the, is the $55,000 design agreement that we have together for this year's funding, and then future, the project itself, the construction, we have estimated at 650,000, of which the FAA would cover 90%. of which the FAA would cover 90%, the state would cover 5%, and so the local share would be the remaining 5% of that 650,000 approximately dollars, roughly $32,000, 32,500.
Say 3,500?
32,500.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yep, thank you. Anything on that that you guys want to discuss further?
No, they just got to proceed with it. So giving us the information, you're proceeding with it because you're contracted with the airport, correct?
Correct. The contract agreement needs to be signed by Jeff, but that's what, Jeff Wafer, sorry, Jeff.
Right.
Okay. So we'll move on to the passenger rail feasibility in Ohio letter. That was sent to our lovely council president, and she referred it to us, and I have burdened Ms. Susan with reading it for us. So if you would.
Okay, so this is Governor Dewine, ODOT Director Marchbanks, and ORDC Executive Director Dietrich. We write as elected officials and community leaders across the state to ask your administration to officially apply before March 20th to the corridor identification program for federal funding to study the feasibility of Amtrak expansion in Ohio. Requesting this fund doesn't commit the state to building a new passenger rail, but will ensure Ohio's planners have all the information needed to make an informed decision without a cost to Ohio taxpayers. The possible economic travel and societal benefits of passenger rail to our communities are already well documented. According to Amtrak, one possible route connecting Cincinnati to Dayton to Columbus to Cleveland will generate 130 million in annual economic activity and 2.6 billion in economic opportunity from one-time investments. Another study on the possible route from Chicago to Pittsburgh found that over 1 million new jobs and more than 3 million additional people are expected to live along this corridor by the year 2040. Ohio is landing new businesses across the state, and we need to connect workers to be closer to these places of employment. Just as important, increased passenger rail can expand opportunities for our citizens. Central Ohio remains the largest metro area in the country without passenger rail, and the last time Dayton or Columbus saw a passenger train was during the Carter administration. Imagine the economic and educational opportunities when rural and big city Ohio is finally connected in undeserved communities. Students, the elderly, and others are able to freely move between our cities and towns at lower cost than maintaining an automobile. However, none of these possibilities can become a reality if your administration doesn't apply before March 8th to the corridor identification program. Applying for this program will give Ohio time and federal resources to work with Amtrak to identify the corridors where passenger rail can be placed, assess the costs, and look at infrastructure needs. It will not commit the administration to building any projects.
So I believe that letter was from the Ohio Department of Transportation and Ohio Rail Development Commission. It was written to Governor Dewine, the ODOT Director, and the ORDC Executive Director. What they're asking for is just the members of this committee to sign. So go ahead.
I just wanted to let you know, Jenny Vermillion, 515 Hill Street. Crawford County now just posted Ohio taking first steps in expanding passenger rail, and there's a whole article about it. I don't, you want me to read it or not? But there's, the final paragraph is the corridor ID program is a comprehensive intercity passenger rail planning and development program that will help guide intercity passenger rail development throughout the country and create a pipeline of intercity passenger rail projects ready for implementation. Applications are due by March 27th.
Okay, thank you. So do you have like a master copy that you would like us all to sign? Should we get with there after the...
And is it, is it the whole council that they want, though?
They just want our...
I just did your committee.
Okay.
If I changed, I could change it to the whole council.
If it's a petition sort of deal, maybe...
It's up to you guys. I've just got one ready.
Okay.
Due to the fact that we have other people in the rooms, does anybody else want to sign that?
I would prefer if all of the members of council would be given that opportunity.
That's what I was asking.
All right.
There we go.
But we'll get with you after the meeting, then, and get that done. Thank you. Anything else anybody wants to discuss regarding that? Steve, or no? Okay. Then we'll move on to the enforcing of the annexation policy. I'll hand it over to Mr. Gerner.
So Dan came at it from a little bit different of a approach than I was, when I was researching it, but annexation by attrition is what I would call Dan's approach, which would be obviously doable. You have your basic Besidere Codified Ordinance, which requires that all properties benefiting from city utilities other than water shall require annexation upon the application for city utility services. And then if they don't file within 60 days of their application for utility services or the annexation is not completed, then the city council at its option may terminate the utility services to the property, which is sort of a problematic situation because the only utility service most of these properties would have is the sewer system, and I don't know if the EPA would allow us to cut people off from the sewer system. I haven't researched the EPA or the Ohio Administrative Code. So then, then you look forward, and there's a couple of different ways to annex properties. So the city can annex property on its own, but only if it were owned by the county, the city, or the state. And so currently, the county owns that little strip of land that connects back to the jail on Steitzer, so theoretically, that would be a property that we could pursue annexation on our own. Other than that, there's nothing in, and I was only looking at the Timken, I put the map with the stuff, but only that side of town. So that would be the only property that the city could actually proactively go and attempt to annex. And I don't know, I think that the county would probably not fight us too bad, because originally, there was some developer that was going to put something there that wanted or needed to be annexed into the city. Where Family Farm and Home is, there's a 1976 agreement between the city and the original owners of that, indicating that they will agree and consent and file the necessary paperwork to be annexed upon the, upon hooking into the sewer laterals. And so theoretically, we could approach Family Farm and Home or their ownership group and say, look, this is a pre-existing agreement, it runs with the land, so it's always going to be existing. We would like you guys to honor this agreement. And so that starts the chunk out there. But all of the private property owners, we don't really have a stick other than the ability to, I suppose, cut them off from the sewer line, which, again, I've never researched the EPA or the administrative code, but I assume that that's not plausible. Right. So then your only stick would be raising rates, you know, so right now, we charge them double what the in-city annexed properties are. So if they were to annex at that point, they would have just the flat rate.
No, I think the same rate we are having.
According to the utility department, we have the same water rate, we charge double for the sewer rate.
That's correct.
Yes. But thank you.
Brian, I have a question.
I have an answer, maybe.
Maybe. Okay, with our rules and laws about, you know, things aren't supposed to stay out in pockets, would we be able to just put something on the books that says that when these properties change hands, like when you sell your property or the deed changes to somebody else, it then is annexed in? I mean, is there a way we could do that?
You can't necessarily annex random properties, so it has to be contiguous.
Well, I didn't know if it was, if it was an area that should have been annexed and the rules weren't followed to begin with, is there a way to, you know, so that it, it's not exactly random at that point, it's more along the lines of to finally catch up to where it's supposed to be, because, you know, that doesn't affect the people who currently own it, and it doesn't, you know, but at the same time, you know, the whole, we have pockets out there that shouldn't be pockets and that go against the rules, is I didn't know if there's a way to do something so that it'd be like step-by-step, hey, you know, when it sells or when you transfer it down to another family member, at that point, it will annex as part of...
Yeah, so...
Filling this gap, like making it legal.
That might be something that we would have to update our code, but the other issue with simply when you sign up for services, I mean, not every property would be contiguous, and not every property, the commissioners are going to agree, because it's not only the city wanting it, it's also the county and the township and the landowner all coming up with an accord, saying that this is in the best interest of everybody. We are able to provide them with better services than they're currently getting, which I think that we have a good argument that, you know, Besidere City Fire Department and Besidere City EMS is better than the current volunteer, I don't know what, what stones in.
Life First.
Life First. I don't know. I won't throw stones at Life First, but that would be our argument, and we would also argue that we're providing sewer services. But you can't annex something that's not touching the city, and you can't like jigsaw puzzle it together. It wants to be a clear and defined orders. So, I mean, I listed 60 properties that are in that chunk. My thought would be, if we really went to approach this, we have a public meeting or something and sit down with them, engage interest, because if there's, all you need is a majority, and if the majority of them say that, we find that this would be a decent idea, or even if not, even if we don't have a majority, we at least understand where we're at. At that point, we start to put together some of those deed restrictions, saying that you can transfer this property, or you can only have services if you put a deed restriction saying that you have to annex when it becomes feasible. Then you start to put together a pocket that could then annex in, because you've got these people with deed restrictions and these people that want to come in, you create a land mass. It's going to be a process.
Yeah.
But there's no way just to tell them, you're coming. And the, like, the way that I annex my house is I'm still a member of the Besidere Township and a member of the City of Besidere, but you can only do that in unanimous annexations. And I don't know that you will ever get a unanimous annexation out there. But I don't know, I, it's, I do like...
As far as Dan's approach, yeah.
That at least gets the ball rolling and gets some deed restrictions. And I understand the underlying point, well, there is these laws that probably were applied with on the back end, but then you have like statute of limitations, tolling of time, lack latches, like if you don't pursue your right, at that point, you kind of have waived it. And some of those properties pre-existed the law, I forget what year we passed the law, but some of the properties were already hooked into the sewer when we passed that. So they're going to say, well, it didn't apply to us, it only applied retroactively. I don't know, but...
What do we do to get the ball rolling on, like what Dan brought up?
Well, I think that we would have to discuss that with the utility department and make sure anybody in that area, they understand the addresses. And I'll talk to Mr. Cowell about, you know, those areas where people are receiving services and getting that second double bill on the sewer. Anytime those properties apply for new services, you know, we have them, we have a deed made that they have to sign. This is something that me and Mike might have to do pretty easily.
Okay. All right, anything else on that? No? All right. Oh, yeah.
Brian, I was sitting there listening, or Brian, I was sitting there listening just a little bit. As far as doing what has happened in the past, that's like closing the door after the Bu- oil horse got out. You guys are going to have fun probably going back through that. But if I heard Mr. Wireball's comment, you're more concerned, Dan, about what transpires in the future, more so than what has already happened in the past.
I've been asking for this for as long, almost as long as I've been on council, and nothing's...
But it hasn't happened. But so, your comments tonight, you're still looking for taking care of the future, if any of these come up. But Brian, use my little bit of common sense here, rather, and I understood this, they may, you put somebody in, and all of a sudden, something changes, you're not going to cut them off of water and sewer. That's not going to happen. But if they want to come to the city, rather than look at it after the fact, or how, what we're going to do, whatever, but making it part of the deed would be one thing, but if they enter a contract with the city, now I'm going to ask you, an attorney, if you have a contract and they go to sell the house, and you put in your contract, they have to take care of this before they can sell the house, and they tried to do that or do do that, would that not become a civil action for the courts to handle or look into as a breach of contract?
Yeah, so also, if you put a deed restriction, and you go and you have some bank, and some bank looks at it, they're not going to loan money when you have a title flaw.
Agreed. But yeah, that's what I was looking at, is something on the deed, the civil actions and so on, or a contract where you open the door and have the access to that door to work with those people, then they are in reach of a contract, you can take civil litigation against them for trying to do that, because you've already got a contract with them. Before they go to sell that property, they have to make sure everything's in place for the city before they can sell it to John Doe.
Right.
But, but yeah, I sit there and listen, I agree with everybody. What's happened in the past and how you're going to work through those, that's going to be a separate thing altogether, I'm sure, but I was listening to the way Dan presented that, and I thought that's what he was mainly looking for, is anything that's going to transpire here out in the future, to get those in place. And I agree, that's what needs to be in place, and then start working how we're going to work backwards and resolve these matters as they come up in the future, because Brian, you know as well as I do, these things are going to come up long after we're probably gone.
Oh, for sure.
So the only thing I wanted to mention is I've seen more of the civil side, maybe servicing more than making an issue out of it.
Yeah, and you brought up, so we're not going to ever be able to cut them off of the sewer, which, agreed. So then, let's plausibly take that out of the code and put something in there like a civil forfeiture penalty of $50 a day or $500 or whatever. I don't know. I mean, what we have in there now is unenforceable, theoretically, but something that actually could be enforced, not that we necessarily would enforce it, but it would at least give us something to be able to use.
Sure.
Just a thought.
Okay. As long as there's nothing else, we will move on to the open projects, if there's any that anybody would like to discuss. Mr. McKeever?
No.
No? All right, we'll move on to our final public participation. Seeing none, we will adjourn at 6:50 PM.
Service Committee, February 9th, 2023.
I'd like to call the Service Committee to order at 6:51 PM. Members present, Steve Young, Ms. Sherrick, Aaron Sherrick, Brenton Ponder, and myself, Chairman. Is there any public participation for the Service Committee? Seeing none, we need to approve the minutes from the January 19th, 2023 meeting.
So moved.
We got, we got a first by Brenton, motion by Brenton, second by Aaron. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Open projects. Anybody got any open projects on their list that they want to bring up for service? Seeing none, we will ask for public participation again. Seeing none.
6:52.
I think we beat Mark. 6:52. Meeting adjourned.
Committee, February 9th, 2023.
I'll call Finance Committee to order at 6:52. Well, that's what this is, I don't know. 6:52. Members present, Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Terry Spiegel, and myself, Chair. Is there any public participation for the Finance Committee? Okay, not at this time. Approval, approval of amended minutes from December 8th, 2022. Regular...
Motion to accept. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have approval of minutes from January 19th, 2022.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll talk about the design work for FY 2023 runway light upgrades. I guess they kind of hashed that out, we just need to give the blessing to spend the money, is that? I guess that's what we're doing here. So, right? Does anybody know? know?
Was there a dollar amount given?
He said our five percent would be thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars.
Does that include contingency?
I believe so, because it was a sixty-five, six hundred fifty thousand for the whole project.
We checked the budget. It's in there.
Huh?
It's already budgeted. It's in there.
It's already budgeted, so we don't need to do a darn thing.
Guess not.
Yeah, we're good.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah. All right. I guess that was for information purposes only. So, let me go to open projects, and I have splash pad under here. Does someone have something on the splash pad, or is that just, uh-oh?
Sir, Jeff was supposed to be here. Thanks for leaving. I'm not sure where Jeff is at. It's my understanding that they opened the bids and they're not exactly what we anticipated at the price point that we anticipated. And part of the problem, I think, is we're going through the public bidding process. And so, one thought with the council's blessing would be for us to transfer our portion of the money that Kiwanis would need to complete the project directly to Kiwanis, have them sign a note and a guaranteed repayment agreement so that they can go out, talk to the splash pad creators on their own, not have to go through all of the public bidding procedures, be able to specifically design it as it works for what we anticipated, and then they reimburse us over a three-year period or a X amount of period. I think the project's going to cost something like two hundred thousand, and they have one hundred thousand. I think that that was part of the administration's goal, so as to get around some of the red tape. And I did the research on ARPA and what you can do with those funds, and we would be allowed to transfer those funds under a loan agreement to a nonprofit. And then the project, whatever, as long as the city was able to complete that project, then the subsidiary group that we transferred that money to under a loan agreement would be able to complete that same project as long as they complied with all of the special ARPA rules. And because this project is going to be less than a million dollars, oh, that's in here somewhere. But because it's less than a million dollars, the federal government, we have less than a million dollars, there's no written justification required for the enumerated project. And then, and if our use is beyond with the treasury enumerated as eligible. So if they say, well, that project wasn't specifically one that we envisioned or approved, because it's less than that one million dollar threshold, the U.S. Department of Treasury would not come back and say, well, this is inept and you guys have to repay it. So, and it would be, under some of the different eligible uses, it would be an appropriate project. I circled some of them. Investment in neighborhoods, school or other educational equipment and facilities. It's not necessarily a school, but it would be a, obviously, an investment into equipment in our neighborhoods to improve our neighborhoods and improve health outcomes for youth. So it would be an approved enumerated purpose under the treasury rules. And if council so chose, we could utilize Kiwanis and their ability to not have to go through the public bidding process. But I think that's as much as I know about that.
Okay. Yes.
Other than them signing a note, what's our guarantee that we get a repayment? I mean, that question has to be asked.
Right. Right. So, there's really, you're not going to get any of the members of Kiwanis, I assume, to sign personal liability.
Sure. No, I understand. I guess my point is, is if they have a target fundraising goal and they fall short of that, you know, we've extended the loan on that money to make the project happen, and if they're not able to get to it, and this is nothing against them. But if we're going to put the money out there and they're not able to return it to us on the stipulations that were talked about, what's the recourse? What do we do?
Right. So, two things. On the flip side, if we pay for it and then they don't repay us, we're in the same boat. If we put the money and pay third-party contractors, we're in the same boat. And I'm sure that we will be able to put stipulations on those money so that they can't be spent without first running it and having us approve it. So they can't take the money and spend it on a new fancy, they used to have that flush thing at the festival.
Yeah. Can it be required to be bonded for that, a performance bond?
Oh, for sure. Yeah, you could do a performance bond.
Or a surety bond.
Yeah, you could do that. But realistically, if, unfortunately, if Kiwanis went belly up, then we're in the same boat as if we paid for it.
I'm not worried about them going belly up. I'm worried about them falling short of their fundraising goals and not getting it back to us within the.
And they might not within the prescribed time, but that would be something that we would have to work with them about. I don't think necessarily that that is the type of organization that's not great to make a good faith effort. They may fall short of the three-year or whatever timeframe we put on it, but I think, and a performance bond or a surety bond is not a bad idea, just because in this business, you have to expect the worst oftentimes. But I, I'm hard pressed to think that that would be an organization that would, you would worry about running off with the money and leaving us holding the bet.
That's not a concern. It's more them falling short of their goal.
But that would be the, the bond would just be for basically intentional towards theft, not necessarily unable to make your repayment plan according to the plan. But I would still probably require both. But, yeah, I mean, we can't take a mortgage. They don't own any properties. I don't know that any of their members would sign personal liability on that. But then on the flip side, we would be at the same place as if we paid for it upfront and they repaid us.
But, but right there, we are paying, aren't we paying for it upfront and they're?
That was the initial plan, but his suggestion is that we front them the money rather than the third-party contractors so that they can cut out all the.
But if they have the money, they're going to, it's going to most likely get done. I mean, yeah, there's a possibility that.
It is going to get, it is, yeah, no, it's going to get done. And I think it will get done at a more economical manner, and it will get done more in tune with what we want because we're not going through the bidding and they're telling us what, you know, this is your option. This is what we'll do for you. They can go out and specifically tell them.
Right. And I understand that part.
But yes, no, we'll give them the money and they'll get it done. And then it's just them paying back a loan to us.
Paying back what?
That hundred thousand.
They'll be paying, but, but here's, here's my point, is we got this chunk of money from ARPA, okay? And we're going to put it in the splash pad, okay? And then here comes Kiwanis and says, well, we were going to do that too. How about if we just give you the money when we get it? So we're still, we're putting in the splash pad, and if we get the money, great. If we don't?
Right.
Oh, well.
Right. It's just, we're doing the same thing, just in a different procedural order.
I mean, I'm just saying, I don't see any, I don't see any problem whatsoever.
Right. It's not any real difference, just who writes the check to the third-party construction company. Instead of us, it would be Kiwanis.
I mean, I'm okay with it. And I guess the law director would have to work that out. And I don't know about the rest of the committee.
And I don't think, like, we need to vote on that or anything tonight. I just think that we need to be cognizant of that may be something that we're trying to come up with. Because we haven't yet.
Okay.
Has Kiwanis an approach for this?
We have talked to some of the members, but their executive committee, I don't believe, has met and discussed whether or not they want to go that route.
Okay.
But we have talked to Mr. Kennedy.
Okay. Other than that?
I've got an open project item.
Okay, open project item?
If we're good now.
Yep.
So, you know, some of the talk has been about these ARPA funds, and I asked the auditor, and she was able to supply me a number of roughly two hundred and ninety-two and a half thousand dollars that still remains, that's not utilized. And I know some of that might need to go towards this project, what you're speaking of. But there's two things that I wanted to bring up that I think are things that I would like to start a discussion on. The first being, you know, we've had discussions about, you know, the firefighters were given the contract. And the police department, you know, we've heard that they're, they're working short-staffed. They're unable to keep a lot of the employees. They're leaving for other jobs. We know that we're up against the need to pay these guys better. We know that they're going to have a contract, or a new contract coming up next year, where we know that that's going to be an increase. But we also heard that the sheriff's department gave all of their members a two-dollar-an-hour pay raise mid-contract as a show of good faith to them. And I think we deserve to do that, or our guys deserve that we do that for them. And I spoke with the chief, and if we were able to offer a dollar-an-hour raise mid-contract, it would equate to about fifty thousand dollars. A two-dollar-an-hour raise would equate to about a hundred thousand dollars. And that's something I really want to see us consider doing. You know, we know that when they come back with the negotiation for the contract, we know that it's going to be an increase. You know, this can be a portion of that to offset that, to give them a little bit more now. Like the chief said the other night, he wants these guys to want to stay here. If they want to stay locally, he wants them to stay here and not go to Gally, who's paying more, and the sheriff's office, who's paying more. Whether you want me to tell you my other idea, or if you want to talk about this one first.
Well, I don't know. It's up to the, if anyone has anything to add or anything. I don't know. Any comments from the committee?
Not from me. I think we can pursue it. What's wrong with looking at it?
We can look at it and get more information.
Well, more information do you need? These guys need more money. They're leaving to go places. We've got the money here. I'm asking that we do something. I don't want to look at it and talk about it for several meetings in a row. I want to take care of our people.
How much you say we had, Kevin?
She said roughly two hundred ninety-two thousand, two ninety-two, four eighty-six was the number she provided me.
And you're saying that a dollar would give it?
Roughly fifty thousand dollars was the ballpark number that the chief provided me.
Would you have to open the contract, do that?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yes.
How short are we still yet on our funds for this year? If we don't pass this levy, where are we at? Because wasn't it as of the summer, we would know whether or not we were going to have the funds to pay? Because if we don't know that we're going to have the funds to pay, don't we need this money to pay for what bills we have now so we don't bankrupt the city?
Right.
I don't know the answer to that.
So that's the more information that we all need to know. Before we can jump on something, we really need to know exactly where we're at.
Suppose the sheriff's department, so it's my understanding, they don't have a union. So the, I don't think they have a union.
They have a union.
I would think they would.
Do they?
Yeah. The sheriff's office went union many years ago, even before I retired and stuff, but they are unionized over there. They do contracts. Every three years, the sheriff's office does contracts the same way. And I was told about the midterm or mid-contract rate, the commissioners and the sheriff discussed and so on. And the information you have is exactly correct, because I understood it, was they were running into the same problem. They were losing officers, people need to be involved and so on like that. But to try to subsidize the officers in our locality, they decided it was in the best interest of the community to furnish a mid-contract raise to kind of set them up in a situation to compete with other agencies around us. Now, that was my understanding. But they, answer your question, they are unionized.
Gotcha.
And I have to somewhat agree with Ms. Sherrick also. I do have concerns as much as I support the police department and those, see, those guys give them the contract raise. And you have to keep them contracted so the public knows. This is to try to support our safety service forces. We still got a contract that's going to be negotiated when the time comes to do. This is just a quick stop to save. But I've been up here enough to the meetings lately and talking to everybody. You do have some real concerns about your budget for this year, and I've heard it from more than one of you, as to whether this levy passes in May, where we'll be if it does pass, which could still be a little on the short side come the end of the year, from what I understand. But if it doesn't pass, you may need that money to pay your safety forces to get to the end of the year. I think between the council and your auditor, you've got a lot of mathematic work to do while you're discussing it to see exactly where you're at. But I'll leave it there.
I'd rather know that they still have to, because we end up having to check people and be horrible.
I understand all that. You know, we were going to look at spending, what, a hundred and thirty-some thousand of that to put a path in to get to the manhole covers that we found another avenue for. So, my point that I really want to make sure that I get across is, can I finish? The point that I want to make is that we've got officers that are leaving us, and it's damn time we do something to stop that. And we've already discussed that if the levy fails, then that's where we go after that, the out-of-town credit. So there is another measure that's going to make up the difference. You know, we're going to talk about it later. One of the things, we're going and asking people to support a levy that's going to increase the pay of these people that are doing the jobs, that are keeping us safe and making this community the vibrant community that we want it to be. I don't understand why there's opposition to this. I really don't.
My point, and I don't know, as far as asking about the sheriff, I didn't know if they just bumped up everybody's pay two dollars an hour. But I think based upon my understanding of the union, if we did it, we would have to open the contract and do it within the contract. Is that right, Chief? I believe so. I believe you would have to put it back in the contract.
I think, go ahead, Bill. I think Brian, you have a couple of questions for counties, how we did that.
So if you're going to put a dollar raise, that would have to actually go back in the FOP contract, even mid-contract?
Probably could do that through a memorandum of understanding or something.
Yeah.
And I do know that we're going to have to open the contract. The contract is going to be open this year anyway to negotiate the wages for the last year of it.
Right. But my, yeah, so that it's doable, but we would have to do it some way with, through the framework of what's currently contract language, either a memo of understanding or through open negotiations and issue a raise until we settle the final negotiation.
You may also want to check with Ontario, because I believe that they went to their council and said, hey, we have this big problem because our officers were leaving to go to, I believe, Worcester. And I believe they did something mid-contract as well with like a percentage increase in the middle of their contract. So I would assume that it can be done.
Oh, I know it can be done. I just didn't know. It's not as simple as council passing a one-dollar raise in a resolution. We'd have to somehow incorporate it into your underlying contract.
I'm quite sure that you wouldn't have any trouble getting that through the union there, if they would do that.
Maybe. Do you think, you think union can sell that?
I think they would probably sell that. I mean, obviously, I'm not going to go here and negotiate the contract here at the podium here. That's not what we're.
No. I was just talking procedurally, how, I mean, I think, yes, a memo of understanding makes sense to me.
Right. And that's something, I mean, if we, if the union people called Dave Garrick, they're from the FOP, that he would, I assume that he would have something worked out pretty, pretty quickly on that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Wireball? If I may, with the chief, just a quick question, Chief. From the administration's side and so on, and you work with your guys all the time, is a dollar an hour, which they're looking at, is that going to be a stop say? Is it going to be acceptable one which they're enforcing? Or?
I mean, I think that anything that we did for them right now, I think they would more than appreciate it.
I agree. But I'm looking at the comparison. We know that the officers are going out shopping at other agencies, be it Delaware, Delaware County and so on. Is a dollar an hour going to fix the problem, or are we just wishful thinking?
I think it would be a good first step. And then when they, when the union sits down with the city here and negotiate the follow year of the wage reopener that they have, then they can try to make up the rest.
That's where my word stop say came in, to at least get us to where we need to be for the contract.
Correct. I think it'd be a good first step, and I think it would be something that they would appreciate seeing from city council and city as well.
Why not do a dollar fifty? That'd be seventy-five thousand on that.
Yeah, sounds about right.
So, I got a couple of questions for you first. We've lost people, right? Do we do exit interviews? Do we ask them why they're leaving?
We've done some, yeah.
Okay.
And what is it?
Some, it's like, I mean.
What's the results of those?
The officer that went to Worthington, he wasn't from here originally. He had no ties to this community. He had the opportunity to take that job down there, and it was not, I don't think, a big deal for him to pack up and go down there. A couple of them had brought up the different shifts that we could work. You know, it's a kind of, said if you can figure out how we can cover the overtime that comes with those. that comes with those different shifts, I'm all ears. We weren't able to ever, I never heard back from any of them that, when we had that conversation. And I believe that at least one of them went to a place that works eight-hour shifts, but he makes substantially more money to work eight-hour shifts and still live here in town. I know there's like one guy that wasn't, he thought he deserved a position there, that I think that we didn't see eye to eye on that, and we, I didn't put him in that position, and then he ultimately left. Did he leave, I don't know how much more money he made, I know he got a promotion since he's been gone, and I believe he's making more money now than what he made when he was here. The simple fact is, we're not getting guys that are leaving to take a job where they make less money.
Oh, no, no.
You know what I mean? It's like...
Oh, I understand that. And I, and you know, I wish, I wish I could give you six more officers, you know, not me personally, but I mean, I wish the city had the money to give you six more officers and give everybody four-dollar-an-hour raise, you know? And I think, and, and, Kevin, I don't think it's opposition that we're seeing, it's just, we went through this budget, we tiptoed around it, we tiptoed around it, and Erin makes a point, even though I hate to say that, just giving you a hard time. Anyhow, you know, we tiptoed through the budget, and we said, okay, this is, this is kind of our little nest egg here, we can use this for that, and, and, and just like I told the chief, I wish I could give them four dollars an hour.
Oh, I do too, that's why I came up with the number between a dollar and two dollars. I think it's feasible, given that, that ARPA money, and I just...
And I'm sure these guys probably, I'm assuming they feel the same way. But, but I don't want, I don't want you guys or the community to think that we're opposed to it, it's just, we've got this, and we've got this, you know? And we only have this little bit to work with. So, you know, I guess I'm, it's up to the, it's up to the committee what, what they would like to do or look at or move forward with. But did you have another something else?
No, I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay, you're going to leave it with that?
I'd like to make a motion to raise it one dollar and fifty cents.
Right.
I don't know how, we can't go retroactive, can we, to February first, or...
That's, let's, yeah, let's, I mean, I'm just trying to look at everything here, let's just go from whenever we get it done.
I'd say as an emergency and from that date forward.
Right.
I'd be fine with me too.
Or from the next pay period forward. That'd be my suggestion.
I'll make a motion as an emergency for a dollar fifty raise.
Raise this to all police officers and dispatchers?
The entire police department.
I'll second that.
Well, well, before we finish up here, but, so we'll have to, I guess, where did she go? The auditor still here?
She's right there.
Oh, there she is. So we'll have to, I guess we'll have to transfer those ARPA funds into the payroll of the, whatever it works out to, into the payroll of the...
Safety force.
Safety force. Now, before we, I got one more thing, because we have the fire department here. Now, you guys be honest with me, now what's that going to, now how do you guys feel about that?
I just walked back in, I'm just, go ahead.
We're going to wait until our negotiation comes up, we're not asking for anything right now.
Okay, I mean...
I think the thing for us, that I would like to see with this levy that you're talking about, is that we don't have a reduction in specs, we need our six a day, that's, if you can promise that to us, we're good.
I think we, I think through the budget, we talked about that, and, and actually, you know, we kind, and which doesn't make any sense at all, but, you know, with us, with us keeping the, with the...
That's what we do.
Well, I mean, I'm going to ask, because, you know, I don't want to walk out of here and this happens, and then, you know, somebody says, well, you know, whatever, but, yeah. All right, so whatever the, what do we have, a motion for a dollar fifty?
As an emergency.
As an emergency. Do I have a second?
Yes, you do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Guess it passes, so.
Yeah.
All right. What else? What else, was that it?
That's it for me.
Any public participation? No public participation, okay, do I have a, oh, I guess we're just adjourned at seven eighteen, I think it said, seven eighteen.